I've got my iPad here. Put it up on my other screen, bud. All right, let's call this meeting to order. And I believe the first item on the agenda is going to be the Pledge of Allegiance. Or do we know roll call?
Did you want to do the introduction of the newly appointed or newly elected counselors and school board members?
Sure, yes. So, thank you. We have two new counselors joining us tonight. We'll be doing a swearing in shortly. Nicole Boucher and or Boucher, excuse me, I know too many vouchers. And Gretchen Noonan, as well as two new school board members Cindy Volz and Jen McVeigh. And we will go ahead with the roll call first, Deb.
Counselor Boucher. Counselor Deveraux.
Here.
Counselor Gabrielson.
Here.
Counselor Garvin.
Here.
Counselor Caitlin Jordan.
Here.
Counselor Penelope Jordan.
Here.
And Counselor Noonan.
Here.
All right, thank you. So the next item is the Pledge of Allegiance, if everyone could please.
I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, our first order of business is the election of the town council chairman. And so I believe we have a draft motion if somebody would like to make that. Actually.
I'll make a motion.
First I should. Do we have to see if there's any public comment before we make a motion?
I think you're okay on this one.
Thanks Penny. Is there a second?
Do you want me to read the motion? Do you want me to read the motion?
Yes, please. Sure, yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, just so we know who we're electing as our chair. Okay, I'd like to move that we elect James N. M. Jamie Garvin to serve as Chair of the Cape Elizabeth Town Council for 2021.
Seconded.
Great, and we'll do a roll call vote.
Counselor Boucher.
Yes.
Counselor Deveraux.
Yes.
Counselor Gabrielson.
Yes.
Counselor Caitlin Jordan.
Yes.
Counselor Penelope Jordan.
Yes.
Counselor Newland.
Yes.
Chairman Garvin.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you for starting off the meeting Jeremy. And thank you all for your confidence that you're placing in me. I appreciate that. We have about 16 folks joining us virtually as meeting participants. Just wanted to put that on the record. And then congratulate also again counselors Boucher and Noonan, as well as school board members McVeigh and Volz. I know you all took your oaths individually in person earlier today. So you're duly sworn, but did want to take just a second to recognize all four of you. And most importantly, thank you for your willingness to serve on both bodies. Greatly appreciated and the service that you're performing for the town is invaluable. So thank you very much. With that, we'll move to item number five on the agenda, which is town council reports and correspondence. Does anybody have anything they wish to report at this point? Counselor Deveraux.
First of all, I too would like to congratulate our two new counselors to the town council. Welcome Nicole Boucher and Gretchen Noonan. Thank you for serving. And welcome to our two new school board members Cindy Volz and Jen McVeigh. Congratulations. And you know, this has been a really interesting year for everyone. And it's taken a lot of time and energy with lots of meetings, especially school board and town council. So I really want to commend you for deciding to run during a time like this, and it's really appreciated. I want you to know that. Second, I want to congratulate the Beach to Beacon TD Beach to Beacon 10K. They, let me get this right, they received the Bib Rave Green Lion Award for sustainability for running events that have integrated sustainable environmental practices into their race operations. They were also voted number one race in America of road races 10 miles or less, which is huge. So I just want to congratulate you. Thank you. And we look forward to hopefully a race this year. So that's my news for today.
Anybody else have anything? Penny?
Yes, I'd just like to acknowledge some really brave people to be starting businesses in any town at this point in time. And so I want to welcome new businesses to our town center. And just stress to people that we constantly hear feedback that Cape Elizabeth needs more small businesses. So I, I hope that people will make sure to patronize these businesses because we aren't going to get additional small businesses in town unless we can help each and every business survive. So I just want to welcome the Lumbery.co and the Tacos and Tequila to town.
Thanks Penny. Anybody else have anything at this point? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the finance committee report. Over to Counselor Gabrielson.
Yeah, thank you. A brief, very brief finance committee report. Matt sent out the financial dashboard earlier today. Just want to note that revenues and expenses both seem to be trending in the right direction. Expenses are trending pretty much as we forecast and revenues are doing, doing pretty well. Obviously, we have, it looks like some slight reductions in revenues on pay and display over the previous year. Hopefully some ability to make that up in the spring, but other revenue sources seem to be tracking pretty well, so.
Matt, anything you want to add or any questions for Jeremy? Go ahead, Matt.
I'd love to. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, as you'll notice, excise tax is doing very strong this year as well, as well as our pay and display. And I think there is, you know, there is an item later in the agenda to discuss expansion of the, of the season for that. So I think that combined, we should overshoot, I think we were going to meet or exceed what our anticipated revenues was as currently constructed. But with that, I think we will exceed and that'll be a nice, if that does take place, that'll be a nice addition to the town's coffers. That'll help us offset other areas relating to bus traffic and, and some of the other tour buses and trolley revenue that we would have anticipated otherwise. And then you'll notice from this point forward, as we come into December, our salt line will change month to month as we start buying salt and sand. So we are, we are in a good position and every day as the works director Jay Reynolds said today, every day that it doesn't snow is a day that we're, we're healthy on the other side of the pallet sheet. So, but you will see that change in the upcoming next few months as we, as we maintain our stores.
Any questions for Matt or Jeremy? The only thing I wanted to just add a couple of things at a more macro level. Sure, folks may have seen article, local paper last there too about school budgets and impact of enrollment shifts and things like that, that I think are going to be challenging us as we come into budget season in just a few short, relative short weeks here, as well as the continued impasse at the federal level of any funding for states and local municipalities as it relates to, you know, COVID emergency funds and things like that. So I, I, you know, month after month, we've been looking at a pretty rosy picture here on the financial dashboard, which is great. You know, certainly there are many communities that would be envious of our position here. But I think there is still going to be some hard work ahead in the budget planning season coming up. And I know Matt and staff are attuned to that and, you know, the great unknowns of, of, you know, what dollars are going to be flowing downhill out of Augusta. So anyway, I just, I just want to sort of, I'm not trying to be a wet blanket, but also trying to, you know, sound a little bit of a cautionary note of realism there as we look ahead to the next fiscal year. So, you know, one of the things I think we saw in the last budget year was the impact of all this probably was going to have a lagging, you know, a lagging residual effect versus the immediate impact that we necessarily saw aside from some short term expenses that needed to be put into place. So on the revenue side, I think the, the impact is going to be longer lasting and deeper. And we're going to all have to roll up our sleeves to probably do some hard work in the budget season this year. So anyway, I just wanted to add that context for everybody as well. Any other comments or questions before we move off of the finance committee report? Seeing none. Are there any citizens joining us tonight that wish to speak about something that is not listed on tonight's agenda? Now is your time to do so. Please use the raise hand function in your Zoom meeting and you'll be recognized and. Mic open. Is there anybody that wishes to talk about something not on tonight's agenda? Don't see any hands raised, so I'm going to pass it off to Matt for his manager's monthly report. Matt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll start off by saying our battle against COVID-19 continues. As recent reports have shown increases in the positive cases, while last week Cumberland County was officially placed on the watch list by Maine CDC. With that information in mind and some limited exposures within our operations, our plan is to maintain our current hours and protocols. Our operations have a flow chart of managing exposure that I shared and worked with department heads as of today. As this information comes out, we try to keep up to date with the most current tactics and approaches. This has a way of managing exposure, testing decision points and direction on when to quarantine and when it is safe to return. This is with the express desire to keep our operations open and staff and our customers safe. Our plan is to continue business with town hall services by appointment. Curbside operations at the Thomas Demora Library, as well as other town operations altered in response to the pandemic. The governor's most recent executive order regarding masks will result in new signage at Fort Williams Park with the desire to remind on the executive order for mask wearing. This is not to say people are not trying hard and doing their part. It's just as a reminder to visitors for this requirement. As Chairman Garvin just noted, departments are working on the annual budget with capital planning and crafting of operational budgets underway. The annual audit is in its final stages and we should be receiving the final product shortly with a joint workshop with the school board to review the document in a January workshop. The Kettle Cove Watercraft Launch Improvement Study was completed by Sibego Technics. And our next step in this process is to hold a neighborhood meeting and share the initial recommendations with the neighborhood and other interested parties. That is scheduled, going to be scheduled for January 14th, 7:00 PM. Following this meeting, the study and its recommendations will be submitted to the council and this will be for your review after that meeting on the meeting for February 21st at that council workshop. The goal is to apply for land and water conservation fund granting in the spring. And the state is firmly in support of this proposal and we anticipate we'll, we'll be receiving easement language from them in late January, as well as that they expressed a, that they will also provide a letter in support of our application for grant funding in the spring as well for the land and water conservation fund. So that's, that's very encouraging as that moves forward. The Village Green Project was inspected Thanksgiving week by myself, the town planner, engineer and public works director. There are a few details that need completion and we anticipate that the acceptance of the property will be on the January council agenda. Finally, I'd like to receive guidance from the council on holiday closures. Both Christmas and New Year's Day are on Friday this year. Now, a number of towns and the city of Portland are closing on both Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve. And this is partly as a gift of time to employees for service in the challenging year, but also as a way to limit exposure during this viral surge. I'd like to follow the same suit, but I wanted to, it's a lot easier to ask than it is to ask for permission than to ask for forgiveness. So that's why I bring this forward to the council this evening. And then on behalf of all town staff, I'd like to wish all a safe, happy and above all, a healthy holiday season. That's, that's my manager's report for this evening, Mr. Chairman. And then at that, and then I'd like to hear if the council had any thoughts if it was okay to approach that, that way for the Christmas and New Year's Eves.
Great, thank you, man. I suspect you'll find no objection from anybody. I know we did that last year specifically for Christmas Eve. I can't remember about for New Year's Eve or not. Also, I know that just a couple of days ago, the president designated Christmas Eve as a federal holiday for this year. So I think that that alone sort of gives you the rationale for, for doing that. So I'm not sure if that's been finalized or not, but I know I saw a tweet about it. Unless anybody objects, I don't want to stifle discussion about it, but I'm sure that, I'm sure that there's. I think consensus for that, so.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I know, I know staff will be overjoyed. So thank you for that. Thanks, the update on the federal recognition of that. I did not see that with all the other news breaks these days.
I think it might just be for this year. I don't know if it's a permanent thing, but. Any other questions, comments for Matt on the monthly report? Seeing none. First up is a review of the draft minutes of our meetings held on October 14th and 9th. Is there a motion from anybody? Go ahead Penny.
We want to do both of them at the same time or do them separately?
I have no objection to both unless there are revisions to either, so.
I move that we accept the minutes from the October 14th, 2020 council meeting, as well as the November 9th minutes from the November 9th meeting.
Second. Moved by Counselor Jordan, second by Counselor Gabrielson. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Deb, can you call the roll, please?
Counselor Boucher.
Yes.
Counselor Deveraux.
Yes.
Counselor Gabrielson.
Yes.
Counselor Caitlin Jordan.
Yes.
Counselor Penelope Jordan.
Yes.
Counselor Noonan.
Yes.
And Chairman Garvin.
Yes.
Your motion carries.
Thank you. Item number 2-2021 is the adoption of the town council rules. Is there any member of the public that wishes to speak on this item? Seeing no hands raised, we have attached to our packet, the current town council rules. They were most recently updated, I think in 2018, it says at the bottom of them. And every year we go through the process of affirmation and adoption of the town council rules. Is there any counselor looking to make a motion? Counselor Noonan.
Can I, just, can we have a, is this time for discussion? Okay. I'm just.
Well, so actually.
Sorry.
Whether, if we want to, if you have questions, that's fine. Just procedurally, let's get a motion a second and then open it up for discussion and questions if that's okay. Do you want to make the motion?
Sure. What am I, I move that we. I don't know what I'm moving. I move that we vote on.
Adopt the rules?
Sure, yes. So, but we, so we vote to adopt them before we discuss them? Is that how, okay.
And then there's opportunity to offer amendments or changes as part of that.
Then I move.
The motion has to be on the, on the table first, so.
Got it. Sorry. I'm, I move that we vote on item 2-2021, the adoption of the town council rules.
Thank you, Counselor Noonan is our second. Counselor Penny Jordan, now discussion. Gretchen, you had questions?
I was just wondering whether section one should be amended at all to include the virtual meetings because it still says that they're in person at the town hall, or if that's not something that we need to.
I don't think we need to change the town council rules because the virtual meetings are only a function of the standing order of the governor as part of the emergency proceedings and things like that. So we're covered with that under previous action that we've taken relative to that special order and that's indicated on all, not just our town council agenda, but other, other bodies that are meeting as well. So I don't think we need to update the, the standing council rules at all, but Deb, you're the expert on this. So I'll slip to you to make sure I'm not off on that.
You are correct, and it will be interesting to see if this legislative session, if there's anything brought to the legislature in any rule or law changes in regards to remote meetings. If there are at that time, we certainly should revisit our council rules at that time as well.
Yep. Yeah, most of these rules here are locally authored and, and some of them do connect though to statutory provisions, so. Any other questions or discussion?
In section one as well, it talks about when the meeting date falls on a holiday, it'll be moved. And so do we maintain a list of holidays or is it the federal holidays? Because I know I heard from a citizen very recently about meetings that were scheduled on Roche-Hushona and how they couldn't make those meetings. And so I'm curious what constitutes a holiday?
I believe it is federal holidays that that is for. So the two that come to mind are Indigenous Peoples' Day and what's the other Monday holiday that we have?
Martin Luther King.
Martin Luther King Day. The King, yeah. So I believe it's based on the federal holiday calendar, but.
Thank you.
And then the, the other part of this, which we have run into in very rare instances, is if a meeting does need to move, it requires a vote to do that. It can't just be arbitrarily shifted without, without voting to move it, so. Any other questions or discussions? All right, seeing none. Deb, could you call the roll again, please?
Counselor Boucher.
Yes.
Counselor Deveraux.
Yes.
Counselor Gabrielson.
Yes.
Counselor Caitlin Jordan.
Yes.
Counselor Penelope Jordan.
Yes.
Counselor Noonan.
Yes.
Chairman Garvin.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Next up on the agenda is items 1, 3 through 16, 2021. The recommendation here is to move these as a consent item where we approve all of them in block. First, I'll ask if there are any counselors that wish to pull any individual item out. These are all of our committee assignments and designated appointments to the various regional cooperative government organizations that we're part of. So Jeremy?
Just as a point of information, the consent agenda as written includes items 16, which is through the MMA Policy Appointments Committee. There are several other appointments that are not included as part of the consent agenda. Could, would it be possible to amend the consent agenda to include items 3 through 24 so that all of the appointments are being considered as one vote?
I think.
I'm, I'm sorry, they're numbered differently.
I'm confused by your memory.
On the bullets, got it. Sorry, the bullets are numbered through 24, but the items are numbered differently.
Yes.
Sorry, I was misreading the.
So this is, this is to go through item.
Up through the code of.
Line item, line item 24, item number 16, yes.
My, my error, excuse me.
Nope. And I'll just take the opportunity to mention, this is our first or maybe second go around with the new agenda platform, the new town cloud platform. So that for both us as participants and anybody following along, might take a little bit of adjustment to get used to seeing some of that stuff. But that is what describes, what explains the discrepancy there. So thanks. So again. Yeah, so again, just if there's, if there are none that want to be pulled out again from 3 to 60, items 3 to 16. And then before I look for a motion, I'll ask if there's anybody from the public that wishes to speak on these items as well. So I'm seeing no, no hands raised for counselors looking to pull any of these out. And I don't see any hands raised from members of the public that wish to speak on these items. So seeing none, is there a motion from counselor to approve the recommended appointments enumerated in items 3 through 16-2021? Moved by Counselor Gabrielson. Is there a second? Counselor Deveraux, any discussion? Seeing none. Deb, can we have another roll call, please?
Counselor Boucher.
Yes.
Counselor Deveraux.
Yes.
Counselor Gabrielson.
Yes.
Counselor Caitlin Jordan.
Yes.
Counselor Penelope Jordan.
Yes.
Counselor Noonan.
Yes.
And Chairman Garvin.
Yes, thank you very much. Item number 17-2021 is Code of Ethics. So the action now for us is to each attest that we have read and understand the Code of Ethics. And then Deb will arrange for each of us to actually sign the documentation for it. So no motion to be made. I don't know, Deb, do you want, do you want to go by name to just affirm that people have done that or is our signature on the document enough to do that?
I think probably going through it with each counselor indicating I think would be appropriate.
Okay, so why don't we do that? And since you're, I don't see anybody from the public with a hand raised wishing to speak on this, but I'll give it a second just in case anybody does. So if anybody from the public wishes to speak on the Code of Ethics, now's your opportunity to. I don't see any hands raised. So Deb, why don't you go down the list and we'll each affirm.
Counselor Boucher.
Yes, I've read and understand the Code of Ethics.
Counselor Deveraux.
Yes, I've read it and understand the Code of Ethics.
Counselor Gabrielson.
Yes.
Counselor Caitlin Jordan.
Yes, I've read.
Counselor Penelope Jordan.
Yes, I've read it and understand it.
Counselor Noonan.
Yes, read and affirmed.
And Chairman Garvin.
Yes, I have read and understood as well. So thank you very much, everybody. Thank you, Deb. Next up is item number 18-2021, the schedule of meetings for 2021. Attached to the agenda this evening is both our regular meeting schedule as well as the proposed budget schedule. This is an item that we went over in our caucus last month. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak on the schedule of meetings item as presented here on the agenda? Seeing none, is there a motion from a counselor to approve the schedules? Moved by Counselor Deveraux. Is there a second? Counselor Penny Jordan, any discussion? Seeing none. Deb, can we vote to approve?
Counselor Boucher.
Yes.
Counselor Deveraux.
Yes.
Counselor Gabrielson. Counselor Caitlin Jordan.
Yes.
Counselor Penelope Jordan.
Yes.
Counselor Noonan.
Yes.
And Chairman Garvin.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Next up is item number 19-2021. Thank you very much. Next up is item number nineteen dash two zero two one. The renewal, annual approval and renewal of the liquor licenses for the Prupudic Club. Are there any counselors that need to make any comments at this point? I don't, Penny, go ahead.
I just want to disclose that the Prupudic is a strong supporter of Take Farm Alliance. And we have done several events there together. And I don't think it's going to impact how I would vote, but I just wanted people to be aware of that.
Thank you for disclosing. Anybody else?
Same here.
Any counselors concerned about what both counselors Jordan have disclosed? Great. Are there any counselors that are members of the Prupudic Club? I don't think any of the past serving counselors are. I don't know if any of the new counselors are. No. Okay. Is there any member of the public that wishes to speak on this item? I think we have somebody from the Prupudic Club joining us on the line.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Tony Decker is here. I'll promote him right now to.
Great. Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Was there anything you wanted to add? Or I know David reached out to you before the meeting. I didn't know if you were intending to offer any comment or anything or.
No, nothing this evening.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. No concerns have been raised by police, fire and code enforcement. So is there a motion from council to approve the renewal of licenses?
So moved. So moved.
Moved moved by Counsel Penny Jordan is our second.
Second.
Counsel Deveraux, any discussion? Seeing none, could we call the roll then?
Council Boucher?
Yes.
Counselor Deveraux?
Yes.
Counselor Gabrielson?
Yes.
Counselor Caitlin Jordan?
Yes.
Counselor Penelope Jordan?
Yeah.
Counselor Noonan?
Yes.
Chairman Garvin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Next up is item number twenty dash two zero two one. Annual appointments to the boards and committees. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak about this item? I think amongst our audience tonight, we have a number of the folks that are being recommended for this appoint these appointments. On behalf of the council and the town, I want to thank all of you for coming forward and being willing to serve. And give of your time and talents to these committees. It's much appreciated. The council very much appreciates the work that all the committees do. To help advise and inform us on the issues that are typically coming before us. So thank you all for your willingness to be a part of that. Is there any counselor that wishes to make a motion? I'm going to turn to Counsel Deveraux as past chair of the appointments committee to make the motion, actually.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve all of the applicants for the listed committees.
Is there a second?
A second.
Counsel Boucher, is there any discussion? Penny, did you have something you want to say? Oh, I thought I saw your hand go up. Sorry. The only thing I'll add, in addition to my thanks to all the folks that have stepped forward here, is that we do have a few remaining openings. That went unfilled as part of this process. So the appointments committee is working to recruit and fill with recommendations for those remaining openings. So I think the window is still open for people to apply on that, right? Yep, I'm seeing head nodding. So if you're interested in listening to the meeting and have an interest in. It's Port Williams Park Committee Personnel Appeals Board, Recycling Committee. Or the Board of Assessment Review, all of those opportunities are available and the town would be grateful for your interest in any of those. Seeing no other comments or discussion, we'll have a roll call vote, please, Deb.
Counsel Boucher?
Yes.
Counselor Deveraux?
Yes.
Counselor Gabrielson?
Yes.
Counselor Caitlin Jordan?
Yes.
Counselor Penelope Jordan?
Yeah.
Counselor Noonan?
Yes.
And Chairman Garvin?
Yes. Next up is item number twenty one dash two zero two one, the appointment of the registrar voters. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak about this item? Seeing no hands raised. We have the statutory requirement of reappointing the registrar voters, which is currently Deb Lane. Who I think is a great opportunity to, once again, shine a light on the terrific job, Deb, that you've done. Not just in your tenure in this, but specifically this year, when there was certainly much greater focus and and much more volume of activity. Than you've probably ever seen before. So thank you for the function that you perform as the registrar voters. And with that, I'm looking for a motion to reappoint Deb to that position with a term to expire January one, twenty twenty three. Is there a motion? So moved by Counsel Deveraux is our second.
Second.
Counsel Penny Jordan, any discussion?
I I just want to say that thank you so much, Deb, for all of the work that you've done. You're amazing. And thank you for wanting to continue in this position. I know it's been a lot of work, but thank you. You're fabulous.
Okay. Deb, want to call the roll on your vote here?
I'm not sure. Thank you all for your kind words. I appreciate it. Counsel Boucher?
Yes.
Counselor Deveraux?
Yes.
Counselor Gabrielson?
Yes.
Counselor Caitlin Jordan?
Yes.
Counselor Penelope Jordan?
Yeah.
Counselor Noonan?
Yes.
Chairman Garvin?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is item number twenty two dash two zero two one. Short-term rental amendments and comprehensive plan amendment recommendations. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak about this item? If you would like to speak, again, please use the raise hand function on the Zoom meeting. And you'll be recognized and each speaker has approximately three minutes for their comments. I see hand raised for James King. And go ahead. You might be muted on your end.
There we go.
There you go. Has an address, please.
Hi, I'm Deborah King. And my husband tells me I should not be on Zoom unless I do my hair, so I'm sorry. Also, he said.
Only hearing your voice, so no worries.
Oh, good thing, good thing. Also, Jamie, my husband Pastor Jim King is very glad to hear that the president says he has Christmas Eve off. I'm uh I'm here tonight to tell you a little bit about this program that you've hired to look into short-term rentals. And the information that it's bringing forth. There have been lots of mistakes. I know you've heard about that. I wonder if there's a better program for you to use, or my suggestion is that you hire someone to look into it to give you better information. Because the. It's it's very disconcerting when someone like me on Chris on Thanksgiving Eve gets a letter saying that you have to stop your Airbnb immediately. Or be fined because you don't have a permit. When I am a home stay and under the laws, current rules, I don't need a permit. So it's very confusing. And I I think that you all may, I don't know if you've really taken into account the fact that. You gave out a limited number of permits, but we did not need one under the old rules. The rules hadn't changed. So what's going to happen to all of us who live in our homes and rent out a room? And also, are you aware of the fact that many people got. Letters saying that they needed to stop their Airbnbs even though they. You know, Zev over at the apartments across from Combe's, he, you know, had a permit. Other people, my folks down the street, they didn't, they didn't get a letter. I got a letter saying I needed a permit when I don't. The other lady across the street, her Airbnb, same thing. They got a letter saying they need a permit and they don't. So what's going on? I I just suspect that the program is kind of weak for finding people. Is that correct?
So I'll jump in that. I'll jump in first and I suspect Matt might be able to offer some comment here as well. The program you're referring to is the third-party compliance platform that we've contracted with earlier in the year. In an effort to help us with our compliance and enforcement of not only existing short-term rental ordinances. But the contemplated ones that are part of the agenda item here tonight. I suspect that this is probably a simple matter of a miscommunication about. Getting notification about things that are part of the proposed or or considered rule changes versus what is in place now. So Ms. King, I know, you know, certainly the ordinance committee members are well aware of your operation. And that you're a hosted short-term rental operator and things like that. And and I apologize if you received communication that was confusing and also.
Upsetting.
In any way, yeah, in any way upsetting. But as as I think you're also aware, you know, no changes have been made as of yet. So I, like I said, I I certainly expected anything that was generated from that was a simple matter of of miscommunication. And.
Yeah, it happened to a lot of people.
Yeah. So Matt, I don't know if there's anything you want to add to that?
I would love to, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the opportunity. Yes, it was a miscommunication, I think, between the, quite frankly, I think the software worked exceptionally well. And identified a lot of them. Unfortunately, it was too early. And it's and it sent out those notifications in error. And you know, I think you said it best that we apologize for the confusion. I know Ben has been in contact with the with the firm and is is efforting it to make sure that we have that ready when it's time. But not to keep that correspondence going out at this point in time until we do have a full deployment and are ready to. To have the software up and going, but it did identify a number of them. And there are some, you know, there are some definitions, I think, that will have to be clarified with the with the firm. As we go forward and when the new ordinance does come into come into place. But yeah, it was unfortunate and and I apologize for that because it wasn't extremely premature. And it did send out some, you know, a handful, if not a little bit more than that, letters in error. And I know Ben's been working on that as well and do apologize for the inconvenience, Mrs. King.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much. Yeah, I had a hard time sleeping that night. It was tough, but there you, one thing you need to know is that with COVID, any of us who operate, who have spaces they rent in their homes. We've had to separate them. So I think that the program picks up. You know, our categories are only, you know, a separate space or a shared space. So we have to put our places under a separate space now for safety reasons. But that, you know, in my situation, that means, you know, full curtains over a hallway doorway, you know, things like that. So I don't know how they're going to find people in various categories for being, you know, forced into boxes that don't fit. Right now, but whatever. Yes, well, thank you. And it, yeah, of course, it was premature. But how do we, those of us who are home stays, how do we get permits? When, I mean, there were a limited amount of permits you gave earlier. And we didn't need one, but we will need one for the future. But how do we get, how do we do it right? And how do we not miss the date?
Yeah, so nothing has been enacted yet, as I think you all know. So when 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 we do move forward with this, you know, we'll be very clear about what those steps are. There's there's no limit to the number of permits. That's not at all part of what's considered. In in either the current ordinance or the one that's the changes that have been proposed.
Great.
The 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 requirement, if it moves forward and is approved, will be that regardless of the type of. Of operator you are, you will need to get a permit, though. So even though you, as you correctly stated, you're currently exempted from having a permit to be required to operate. That will change should the proposed changes get approved and be implemented. I think you've also heard us, the last thing I was gonna say, you've also heard us talk about how, you know, unlike many ordinances. That automatically go into effect thirty days after passage unless otherwise indicated. That, you know, we've we have signaled that this will require, you know, probably some additional time. To make sure that all of the finer points and details can be, you know, clearly communicated to folks. As well as, you know, build in enough time to be considerate of existing bookings that that might fall in that window.
That's right. And are are we going to have? We had a, we had a little health issue around here recently, so I missed a meeting or maybe two. But I noticed that the way things are written up now are very different than they were a couple of few months ago. And it doesn't seem to have any special separation for those of us who are home stays. You know, our our folks always come for a couple of days. They're not here for a week. It's not like renting a whole house. It's a different experience. Are we going to still be restricted? By those. Men, ma, minimum day parameters?
I'm going to answer your question and then look to move on to others so that other folks have a chance to comment, but.
Thank you.
The current, yep, not at all. And thank you for your comments. The current amendments that are included here tonight. Do not treat hosted any differently than unhosted in terms of the seven-day sort of resting window. So it would require further change from what's here. But I also don't, thinking back, and Penny, you could correct me if I'm wrong, but I I don't remember us ever having a carve-out. For those to be treated any differently to begin with. I I think we were always of the opinion to try and keep things uniform and simple. That even even if it is a hosted rental, that there's still the impact of, you know, people coming and going. Whether that be renters or, you know, perhaps service personnel and and things like that. So I don't I don't recall us ever moving off of that seven-day item, so anyway, go ahead, Penny.
We did it. You're exactly right. We never, we didn't move off that.
So next up, I see John Volt's hand raised. John. You wanna wait just one second? Go ahead. Name an address, please. Go ahead, John. John, we've got you open on this end. I don't know if you're muted on your own. John, can you hear us? Because we can't hear you. Why don't we pause, John, see if we can't get him reconnected? Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak? I see Craig's hand raised and John. Test, test. John, I think I think you're back on, John. There we go. Sorry, is that working? Yeah, so I got John. John, if we can get your name and address, and then I see Craig and Scott next up in the queue, so.
John, John Volt, thirty-three Philip Road. I wanted to speak specifically to just the changes in the comprehensive plan that are proposed. Partly because of, I think, I view the comprehensive plan as a more, a little more durable document than than ordinance and regulations. And I was, would like to suggest you consider striking the words after limited short-term rental activity. Beginning with associated with primary residence or in lower density portions of towns, striking that from the comprehensive plan amendment. So it just reads limited short-term rental activity may be allowed within a permit structure that allows for tracking of activity. And funding enforcement. And I'll speak to why that is. You've identified in the planning board document two specific goals of the short-term rental arrangement, which is the quiet enjoyment of residential neighborhoods. which is the quiet enjoyment of residential neighborhoods and preservation of housing stock. To the extent, you've also identified some solutions for those, but those solutions are not exclusive, nor are they necessarily complete insofar as someone may be able to demonstrate how they can have, maintain quiet enjoyment with short term rentals in a residential neighborhood. Many of them do that now. It's just, or how they prefer having stock. But putting it in your comprehensive plan doesn't allow for those future refinements without having to go back and revisit it. Again, particularly the laws developing around the different types of landowners and residences in other areas of the country, and there may be challenges. This allows you to say, we want to limit it and, and we want to preserve, and these are the two key functions of it. That seems appropriate for a comprehensive plan. Singling out specifically residential uses and, and limited density, when it's actually contrary to the planning board's own comments about limited density seems unwise. I think it will be stronger actually without specifying those two, at least within the comprehensive plan. So I urge that you would consider striking the language that identifies the two solutions to the policy question that's stated in the amendment.
Thank you, John. Can I ask that you just repeat for clarity that the recommended language that you started off your comments with?
Yes. In the second sentence of the plan amendment, after keeping limited short term rental activity, striking associated on through the comma at town. So striking associated with primary residency or in lower density portions of town. Just striking that clause.
Great. Thank you very much for your comments. Next up is Craig. Craig, can we get your name and address, please? And your mic is open.
Hello, can you hear me?
We got you. Go ahead, Craig.
Okay. Hello, my name is Craig Cooper. I live at 150 Ocean House Road. I'm a long-term resident of Cape Elizabeth. I'm a homeowner, a business owner, a landlord and a property manager here in Cape Elizabeth. I want to thank the Mr. Chairman and the members of the council for the opportunity to speak with you regarding the short term rental, the information before you this evening. The planning board and its, and its committees have done a lot of work, held numerous workshops and included a public hearing recently on November 17th to draft the amendments which are before you this evening for the short term rentals. I attended that November 17th public hearing, a Zoom meeting attended by approximately 30 other people. I remember a year ago, when all of this started with the council and the planning board, and we were having public hearings, or you were having public hearings, and the attendance was more like 100 people. The room was packed. And I just think that through, this is, this is something that is going to be affecting many, many people. And the fact that much of this has been going on and being done during this pandemic, while admirable, admirable in some sense for the people working on it, it's also tragic to many of the public who cannot attend these Zoom meetings or will be negatively affected by this type of behind the Zoom doors type of thing that's the way it's happening. While I understand everyone is trying to be as transparent as possible because of Zoom and the limitations, a lot is lost and it is affecting many people. And I think that's something that should be considered. I've often said in these meetings that it is too bad that a few problem areas of short term rental have resulted in recommendations like the ones before you that now cast a far reaching, very broad net affecting many Cape homeowners negatively when their short term rentals have never been a part of the problem. I'd like to give you an example. As a property manager for Mary Giftos, who owns, lives at 1055 Shore Road and has a guest house at number six Point Road, one third of a mile away. Mary is just one Cape homeowner being negatively affected by these recommendations as they are presently written. I refer you to your section 19-8-14, the short term rental standards. Paragraph B permitted short term rentals, number four, short term rental adjacent. This section is discussing guest houses, basically. It allows a short term rental for a guest house as long as it is directly abutting or on the same lot or across the street. However, not Mary's guest house, by example, which is one third of a mile away. I realize that this has been a long and ongoing process and the final outcome has not yet been reached. But at this time last year, before COVID-19 and this pandemic hit, when you were first starting to talk about this, and as we were nearing the end of the calendar year, the fact that many people had contracts already in place for short term rentals for the summer of 2020. That was brought up and it was agreed that if things were done, what might happen? Again, we still don't know what might happen. Those people were going to be allowed to honor those contracts which they had already in place. Then COVID hit. The summer of 2020 is one that all of us would like to put behind us, I'm sure. But now we find ourselves in the same time of the year as we did last year. And as someone who has had permits in the past and has a permit now, has done things the right way, we have, we have contracts in place for the summer of 2021. Some of those are people who could not stay during 2020 because of COVID. Others are possibly new requests. But Chairman Gavin, as you just said, nothing has been finalized yet. So those of us who have been doing this for years and are trying to move forward and allowing and making contracts with people, we don't know the final outcome of this. It will be a while before we do. If you choose, should you choose to initiate things as they're written, I sincerely hope that you would consider allowing for us to honor contracts that we have at the least, at the very least. And I'm sure that we'll be talking much more. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. I appreciate your comments. I want to just address one thing that you brought up at the beginning about conducting business over Zoom and just say that, at least speaking for myself, I completely disagree with the point that, that you're raising there. And I just, for the record, want to, want to be straight with folks that nothing is being done to in any way subvert public participation. Some of the highest attended meetings that we've had in my five years tenure on the council have been during this time when we've been meeting via Zoom. I frankly don't recall a single meeting on this specific topic that involved the attendance, reaching the number that you described for in person at Town Hall. I know we had some meetings where people were packed into the Jordan conference room, but I don't recall any specific meeting of the council or the ordinance committee that, that came anywhere near approaching the number of people that you were mentioning. So I just don't want anybody in the public to have the impression, which I think is an incorrect one, that any of this is being done in any way using the cloak of the public health emergency and the current means by which the council has to meet in order to conduct its business to try and, and in, you know, jam anything through or anything like that. I think, I think the ordinance committee and the council have been overly open and transparent in their dealings on this, inviting an abundant amount of public participation and comment throughout. I know that ordinance chair, Jordan, has gone to great lengths within the ordinance committee meetings to make sure that all opinions have been heard and all, all input taken into consideration. So I just bristle a bit at the suggestion that any of this is being done in a way that's inconsistent with what I know are shared goals amongst all the counselors and staff that we operate in a fully transparent and fully open manner. So I just wanted to make those comments. Next up is for hand raises, Scott, and I just want to remind the public to try and limit your comments to about three minutes if you can. Scott, if you could give us your name and address, please.
I think I unmuted.
Yep, go ahead. We can hear you. Yep.
Scott Rockwell, 119 Old Ocean House Road. And I am a short term rental host in the, currently in the home stay category. The topic that I just wanted to discuss, among other things, would be some of the changes in the current or proposed ordinance, which would impact our model as well as many other models in town, where we try to serve a, where we do have a niche kind of model to try and serve families when they're traveling to try and make it economical for their, for their travels. And to be able to offer situations that may not be something that they'd be able to achieve in a hotel. In our particular case, we've had three bedrooms available for, for our guests. In many cases, we'll have a family with two teenage children, a son and a daughter and a single mom. Whereas we have the ability to be able to put them up in three bedrooms and we're only hosting three people. We don't quite fall into the category of the constraints that they're trying to put in now with being only able to use two bedrooms. Additionally, there's other issues in the seven day versus a short stay restraints that are put in with this new ordinance. The reasoning behind that, as I recall, was to try and keep neighborhoods free of house cleaners and the change that occurs with the cleaning staff coming in. All, all at the same time in order to, to get, to prepare for a turnover in the unit. Unique to the home stays is that we, as the operators of our, of our rooms available for, for our guests, we are the cleaning staff. We don't have the privilege of hiring others to come in and do all that cleaning. We do it ourselves. And, and as a result, we're not bringing cars, carloads in to come in and do a quick clean to turn it over. So these are some of the considerations that really weren't taken into account in some of the constraints, you know, the changes in the ordinance. And I do look forward to being able to have ongoing discussions and perhaps we can all best pen them into the committee in order to, in order for us to be able to express our ideas in such a way that you may be able to have the time to look at it as it fits into the new order. We would certainly all appreciate that opportunity to be able to speak to these changes as they affect us individually. And on a side note, there was, I bumped into one of the councilors recently who probably brought up the good news of three new businesses opening up in the town of Cape Elizabeth. This is exciting news for the town. But at the same time, we need to bear in mind that there's not a lot of business zoned properties. And for a lot of us, the changes that come in as a result of the new ordinance may result in many in-home businesses. These are business opportunities for us to be able to work out of our own homes. There's many of us that as a result of this ordinance will likely end up having to close down that business. So it's just another type of change in the, in the economic impact. Great. We have three businesses opening in town this month and we wish them all very well. I hope the same will occur for the rest of our opportunities to be able to do the work that we've only been able to do. And in some cases, some of us have only been able to do that during the past six or seven months while COVID has shut down our other outside of the home businesses. And if it weren't for these home businesses that we have in place, a lot of the hosts in the area would certainly have been a lot more severe.
So. Scott, can I ask you to conclude your comments? Cause it's, it's quite a bit past the three minutes.
I, you know me to be very wordy, so I will start at that point. And I, again, I just, I hope we can continue the discussion and discuss. And I agree, if we can turn our concerns into you, email them in. Maybe we can get some results that way as well. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else from the public that wishes to speak on this item at this time? I don't see any hands raised. I do want to ask, so Joe Shalat from the planning board is joining us tonight. And Matt, if you wouldn't mind promoting him up. I did want to ask Joe, if you don't mind, just giving the council, maybe a Reader's Digest kind of summary of the review that the planning board undertook. And I know we have both the memo as well as the red line that was provided back to us. But if you wanted to add any sort of color commentary to that about your review process and, and what, what you've sent back to us. So thanks for joining, Joe.
Okay, sure. Hi, everybody. I'm Joe Shalat, outgoing chair of the planning board. And so we received the proposed ordinance change back in July. And we had four workshops and a meeting in which the meeting we took public comment. And our initial reaction to the proposed changes was that it was actually very well, very good and would go a long way in solving many of the issues associated with short term rentals. So we took a two-track approach. One was to just take the ordinance and tweak it and improve it, make sure it's clear and deal with any small issues we saw in it. And then, and less pragmatic, we also decided to have an addendum in which we would express any consensus views that we had on the short term rentals. So I don't know if you want me to just go through the summary of changes that we made quickly, if you all have them. I can highlight a few of them. One is that we thought that the use of the homestead exemption was a great concept. We thought it would be better if you actually required it rather than, as the text said, simply qualify for it. If you don't obtain the exemption, the state penalties do not apply. And also that would put the town in the position of having to evaluate whether someone qualifies for a homestead exemption. So just moving on, we like the RV exclusion. Oh, six two, the proposed statement to replace tourism with transient occupancy. Sounds awful, but the building code refers to any kind of residential use less than 30 days transient occupancy. So we thought the text should have that verbiage. We, on 640, we added language that the budding land can be counted. We just wanted to make sure that was clear that if you use three lots to get seven acres, that that's one short term rental and not multiple rentals. We recommend deleting the 1% fine on the advice of the town attorney. I believe that was because the state has regulation on maximum fines and that could exceed it. We also. Added supporting language for the on street parking. To make that clear. So. There's a couple of little other items in there and. If you have questions about them, I can go through that. We then wrote an addendum. Whoops. Hold on one sec. Okay, so. The addendum was a process by which the board. Came up with general ideas that we all agreed to and. The first one is that we definitely all believe that short term rentals. Have a negative impact on the quality of life in a neighborhood. We all seven of us. Agreed to that, maybe with some dissenting minor points, but. And you know, there's really a couple. Best way to look at that is is if you have a how a neighborhood with 20 houses on the block. You can have one short term rental and you're not changing the character of the neighborhood that much. You know, permanent residents care a lot about a town. They volunteer for municipal and school events. They 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 take part in the life of the town. People on vacation. Are there for vacation, you know, nobody's going to come to Cape Elizabeth for two weeks and volunteer for the bottle shed. I mean. Fact is, people on vacation behave differently and 95% of the letters that we saw. Are complaints about how badly people behave when they're in their short term rentals. So. As I said, we felt like the basic gist of the amendments went goes a long way in solving that. We were we're somewhat concerned with the number of days that the short term rentals can operate. We recommended a cap that the cap on residents unhosted be reduced from 42 days to a lesser number. Couldn't really agree on a number though. We all understand the the reasoning for the seven acre adjacent. Category. Those properties have historically. Hosts had short term rentals with really no issues ever reported, but. It just seems like it's creating it's carving out a special interest niche and. The board is just generally uncomfortable with that. Another item is the regulations seem overly complex in terms of. When stays begin and end. And. All the all the regulations associated with it. One of the things we thought that might help a lot is to have a short term rental season. Makes that the the. Effects more predictable for the community at large and. That's all I have on that. We thought a second failure to obtain a short term rental permit should have a more severe penalty. We thought five year was appropriate. And then finally. While we did all agree that short term rentals should be prohibited in the R A, R B and R C district. We thought that they were acceptable in the business district such as the town center. As they are commercial use. However, the zoning of the town center was really meant to. Create a commercial level at grade or at the first floor and. The zoning ordinance as it stands now has a bit of a loophole that it recognizes. Short term rental as a commercial use, but it allows it at the first floor and. Issue is with that is that the you know, the town center zone has commercial first floor to. Kind of activate the town center and give it some life and you know, I think the vision is that their businesses. Offices and the like on on the first level and. Where we do have residential, it's up above and you think of Rudy's or the building in back of Rudy's. Dental, the new dental office that was just approved. Those are all. Commercial use on the first floor with residential above. When you have residential on the first floor, you're potentially. Having a use that is vacant. For a good portion of the year and it's not. It seems not in keeping with the intent of the town center zoning ordinance. So. We proposed that. The short term rental in the town center be restricted to the upper floors. And it'd be changed to a. Accessory use, I believe is how we worded that. So that's what I got.
Well, Joe, thank you for the overview and summary of the position of the planning board and the recommendations back. I also just want to take a minute to thank you and and the rest of your colleagues on the planning board. For the amount of time and effort that you put in with a really thorough and thoughtful review on this complicated matter. The amount of public input that you received and. You know, digested as a as a function of this. And I know from having watched some of the planning board meetings pertaining to this that. You know, there were certainly some frustrations on the part of some of the board members. With some public confusion around. You know, who who are the folks that are making the policy versus who are the folks that are, you know, trying to interpret it and think about its. You know, practical effects of its application. And I think you guys did a terrific job on on the latter part. And the you know, I'm grateful for the time that you guys all put in on it and and the very thorough recommendations that you provided back. So thank you very much for that and for being part of the meeting here tonight. Are there any counselors that want to ask a question of Joe on behalf of the planning board or? Go ahead, Penny.
Yeah, it's not. Necessarily about the ordinance changes, but is it inappropriate to ask that Joe comment on. On the the planning board's discussion around the comprehensive plan amendment because. I I think we've had a person who recommended some of the. Words be. Removed, but how does that change the intent? I know there was a lot of discussion around developing that.
Yeah, so the intent. I mean, the 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 crux of the short term rental. Ordinance here is that. The person has to be resident of Cape Elizabeth, right? They have to qualify for the homestead exemption. So. The language in there. The. That's where that sentence associated with primary residence comes from, right? Limited S T R activity associated with primary residence. So. We're saying, let me just read this. So yeah, we're trying. I I think the goal of this sentence is to say that S T R activity is limited. But it has to be associated with primary residence.
Okay.
So I don't think. I mean, he makes, I think he makes a good point that you could get rid of it and. Cover you cover more situations, but I think that. Associating with a primary residence really goes to the heart of what the changes to the ordinance are trying to do.
Okay, thank you, Joe.
There are other questions for Joe specific to the planning board's review? Okay, well, again, Joe, thanks very much. So we've got two separate items to deal with here. One is the proposed amendment to the to the comprehensive plan. The others. The proposed amendments to the short term rental. Ordinances. I'm happy to take any motion from the floor at this point. My my recommendation based on where we're at is that we. Consider referring this to our next workshop to iron out some of the last remaining details. The other thing I'll add is that I think at this point we're we're, you know, to the point in the process. We're 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 pretty close to being able to get sort of a final legal review. From outside counsel, just to make sure we're all. In alignment from that perspective. And I've already talked to Matt about that about getting that. Lined up. So. Like I said, happy to consider other other motions, but my recommendation would be that we. Move this on to our next workshop and just for everybody else's benefit to both council and public. Subsequent steps in this would be what you know, and and we are near the very end of the process on this. I appreciate the patience that. People have had throughout and I think it's, you know, resulted in in a good output here. In the form of this ordinance, but we we still have a few. A few final steps to take before we get get across the finish line. One of those being even though the the planning board has held a public hearing on this. The council will also need to hold a public hearing as well. So I'd like to to get to that public hearing with as close to final as possible. You know, assuming that we are able to iron out some of these points that have been raised. And I know that council has continued to had have. A slightly differing point of view on on some of the nuanced details here. So. I think if we can, if we can get to that point, bring it to a public hearing and then vote, we're probably just a couple of meetings away from being able to. Get this finalized. So Penny, I saw your hand raised. Go ahead.
Yeah, you kind of took the words out of my mouth. They where I wanted to propose that we go with this because I think the. The planning board did excellent work in providing some really constructive input on. Where we're at with the ordinance and I think that we as a team need to workshop this and then get it pretty well. More baked. I mean, I think we're really, really, really close. And so workshop it and then get it to a council meeting and to a public hearing. So my motion is to. Put this to our next workshop and really work through the details that the. Planning board has put in front of us. And plus, I think, like you said, Jamie, having some additional input from any legal counsel. So. Motion to move it to a workshop.
Motion by Council Penny Jordan is our second. Counselor Deveraux, is there any discussion from the council? Jeremy?
I believe the. Planner has requested some guidance from the council on, you know, where we'd like to go with that. Transition period. Is that something we should provide tonight in in the hopes of getting some language drafted that we could review? Or do we want to do that at workshop?
I think it's. Yeah, I think I think we have a recommendation. And and also some other considerations here so that we can take that into, you know, into the discussion there. I also did want to note that. The council did receive on the order of about a dozen or so emails. Leading up to this meeting, the vast majority of which were encouraging. Us to move forward with the recommendations from the planning board. In some form or fashion. So the the opinion that we received, at least by email. Was was pretty consistent on that point. And again, I I. I don't, I don't want anybody who's been following along through this lengthy process to think that at this stage. We're not getting very close to completing this work, but there are still a few, just a few remaining steps that we have to take notably. Scheduling a public hearing. At a future council meeting before we can move forward with any voter adoption on these. So. So I think we're getting very close, but not quite there just yet. Any other comments from folks? Matt, you want to add something?
If I may just ask a question for clarification purposes only, I was just wondering if Counselor Jordan's motion was for both. Sorry, number 22 and for number 23, and that would be the package together.
I had a question around that because I. And that's why I was just talking about the item. Number 22 because my question is. Do we need 23 in place? From a timing perspective? Is there any timing relationship to 23 in? Being prior to 22 or can we take them both at the same time? At our workshop?
I believe I believe you can take them both at the same time at the workshop because one functions with the other. They're kind of a hand in glove type of.
Exactly.
Operation.
Exactly. And so. Jamie, what's the protocol for modifying the motion? Do we want to take them at the same time or I can make a separate motion around 23?
I think let's just do a separate one for 23 to refer to workshop.
Perfect. Okay.
I think to to honor our process to just to invite public comment on that item. We haven't, we haven't put that item yet on the table. So let's just stick with what what we've got at the moment. So.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, so the current current motion is to refer item number 22 dash 2021. To workshop. We do have a workshop on Wednesday. I'm not suggesting that this be on Wednesday's workshop meeting. Because I don't think that that's providing proper notice for folks. So it would be at our first workshop in January then.
That would be January 6, Mr. Chairman.
Yep. So coming right up. It's not, we're not dropping. Much time on that at all. So. Okay, if there's no further discussion or comments, call the question and Doug, can you read the roll call, please?
Counselor Boucher?
Yes.
Counselor Deveraux?
Yes.
Counselor Gabrielson?
Yes.
Counselor Caitlin Jordan?
Yes.
Counselor Penelope Jordan?
Yeah.
Counselor Noonan?
Yes.
Chairman Garvin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. So next is item number 23 dash 2021. This is what we just spoke about, the. Language adjustment to the comprehensive plan, item number 86. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak specifically to this item? I see no hands raised and just for a check, we've got about 25 folks still with us in the meeting. So is Penny, would you like to make a motion on this then?
Yes, I would like to move that we. Move this item to our. Workshop in concert with the 2022. So 23 and 22 will be addressed at the same workshop.
Motion by Counsel Penny Jordan is our second.
Second.
Second by Counsel Deveraux. Any discussion? Seeing none? Go ahead. Go ahead, Doug.
Counsel Boucher?
Yes.
Counsel Deveraux?
Yes.
Counsel Gabrielson?
Yes.
Counsel Caitlin Jordan?
Yes.
Counsel Penelope Jordan?
Yeah.
Counsel Noonan?
Yes.
And Chairman Garvin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Next up is item number 24 dash 2021, recommendation from the Fort Williams Park Committee to continue pay and display parking as well as adjust the effective dates for it. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on this item? I don't see any hands going up. Matt, I know that Chris Cutter is on the line. I don't know if, and I see Jim Kearney on the line. Chris or Jim, if either of you wanted to offer any comment at this point, you're welcome to. Jim, I see your hand raised. Go ahead. Mic's open, Jim. Go ahead. Oh, it was. Hold on.
That was my bad, Mr. Chairman. Sorry. He was faster than I was on that, on the unmute.
There we go.
Jim Kearney, 1015 Shore Road. I'm currently the Chair of the Fort Williams Park Committee. And we raised this issue because, for, for a couple of reasons. Number one had, we started in 2019, so we had a short season in 2019 and a short season in 2020 because of COVID. And it seemed from a traffic perspective that we're getting heavy traffic in, in April of last year and in November of this year. I think the program's been well received by the local community, by season pass holders. So the object of potentially extending this season at no financial risk to town or with any burden to our residents or to our neighbors or season pass holders was very low. So we just thought it would say a good move and would give us some flexibility. If we are going into a kind of a bright and sunny and warm April, it'd be good to have the flexibility to deploy the pain display meters in April and that, so they wouldn't have to be deployed exactly on May 1st. And likewise, to extend the season, if it was a warm season, we thought we were going to have heavy traffic and not have a hard deadline of the end of October. So we just wanted to make those extensions from a, from of a seasonal perspective and also to extend the program into future years.
Jim, thanks for that summary. Are there any questions counselors have that they'd like to direct to Jim?
Jim, are there extra costs to extending the season?
No, and basically at this point, most of the costs are sunk costs. So it's, it's a matter of what date we're able to get the vendor out there to do the implementation of the equipment. Just means moving it out of storage and onto, you know, onto the meter stands that exist out there already.
Okay, thank you.
Counselors, we say, and are you both familiar with the current revenue structure from the program? That it's basic, it's a revenue share with the, with the operator so that basically whenever, whenever it's active, they're, they're taking their cut and we get ours. So that so Jim, I did have a question. Was there discussion amongst the committee about instead of having it be even at a longer season, instead of having it be a seasonally effective program to just making it year round?
Yeah. So we had originally discussed that when we first proposed it. And the thought there was twofold. Number one, we wanted to get the meters out of the way of the snow plows. And so we don't have any damage there. There's very little winter traffic and the winter traffic that is there is mostly residential winter traffic. And of course, there are no fees for Cape Elizabeth residents or their seasons pass holders. And number two, we wanted to get it just out of the bad weather period. We didn't want to have those displays out that, but they're hardened for winter. Saltwater winters of, you know, kind of a whole nother ballgame right there at the, to the ocean.
Great. I just wanted to see if it was discussed and contemplated at all. Thank you. Are there other questions? Anyone has for Jim? Okay, thank you, Jim, for joining. So I'll look for a motion from a counselor to approve the recommendation, which was five zero unanimous vote of the Fort Williams Park Committee last month, that we both continue the program and adjust the effective dates to be April 1, 2021 to November 15, 2021. Is there a motion? Moved by Counselor Noonan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Deveraux. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Doug, could you call the roll, please?
Counsel Boucher?
Yes.
Counsel Deveraux?
Yes.
Counsel Gabrielson?
Yes.
Counsel Caitlin Jordan?
Yes.
Counsel Penelope Jordan?
Yeah.
Counsel Noonan?
Yes.
Chairman Garvin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you very much. Next item is number 25 dash 2021, also an item relating to Fort Williams. The Fort Williams Park Committee has recommended establishing a concert series. And at their November meeting voted unanimously to recommend to the council that we approve Music in the Park Series sponsored by Community Services entitled Sounds by the Sea at Fort Williams. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on this item? Don't see any hands going up. I do see that both Community Services and Fort Williams Park Director Kathy Raffis and Chris Cutter are both with us. Kathy or Chris, would either one of you like to give a little bit of an introduction here? Hi Kathy.
Hi, can you hear me?
Loud and clear. How are you?
Great, thank you. How are you? So we had started talking at the Fort Williams Park Committee meeting about having music in the park and how, we had a couple of events this past summer. And as a result, formulated a subcommittee to get together and talk about how we could do this. On the subcommittee, we each did a little bit of research on different communities and how they handle it. And a lot of it is done through different rec departments, whether it be South Portland has it down at Mill Creek Park, Falmouth has one, Standish has one, Gorham has them. And they're, you know, they're done by sponsorship and they're about four, five, six weeks in the summer that they do it on one night. And we went through all of that and formulated a Sounds by the Sea at Fort Williams Park. And we would do six nights on Monday nights and start at 6:30 and the handout that you received said to 8:30, we were going to have it be till 8:00 PM, not 8:30. The committee came out with three locations that we'd like to try at the park, Battery Knoll, Picnic Shelter, and the gazebo, bandstand. Community Services would handle the sponsorship, get the bands together, handle the contract, and do the advertising for the events. And that's kind, and we brought it back to the committee. The committee voted on it, had a few suggestions. We made a couple of little changes and voted to approve it.
Okay. Jim Kearney also still with us. Was there anything you wanted me to add, Jim, from the committee's perspective or?
I guess really just one thing. Well, first of all, Kathy and the team did a great job putting this together. What I wanted to add was that, as you know, we've kicked off our master plan update process. And some of the early feedback that we're getting from over 250, I think, surveys thus far is that we're hearing from a lot of folks that they want to keep the focus of the park more for residents and keep things more the same than opening it up for a, a lot of kind of out of town, you know, parking lots and pay, pay events. This is something that we thought would serve the local community well. We, we had thought about that before we started getting results. So it's nice to see that the results from the survey kind of back the concept of offering more opportunities for the residents of Cape Elizabeth to enjoy Fort Williams Park in the summer, outside of the domain of the main tourist attractions within the park.
Okay. So is there a motion from anyone on the council at this point to approve the recommendation of the Fort Williams Park Committee for establishing this concert series?
So moved.
Moved by Counsel Penny Jordan is our second.
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Deveraux. Is there any discussion or further questions for Kathy or Jim?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Kathy or Jim, I know that having been at events at Fort Williams Park in the past, parking, entering, exiting, and all of that can sometimes be a challenge if there's a, a large turnout. I'm sure you guys had a lot of discussion around that and how that would be managed and whether it would be town staff or volunteers that would kind of help orchestrate parking.
So we did discuss some of the logistics and the issues around logistics. The initial thought was that this would be a light footprint, not big bands. So we're not looking for significant amplification, it'd be light amplification if any, and that we would, we were doing this in the evening hours when parking and traffic isn't as much of a big deal. Same thing with it being on a weekday as opposed to a weekend. So we didn't feel like we'd be pressing the limits of any of the capabilities of the staff or capacities for parking at this point. And we did do a couple of events this summer that were, came up as one offs that we approved for approved usage within the park. And both of those went well. It was kind of a, a nice way to trial run something before we even conceived of having a summer concert series. So it just worked out well to be able to get some feedback from those two events.
How does it fit with pay to display? But
No special issues around that guests coming in from the outside would need to pay to park. If they're using the park in, during those hours, residents don't pay and season holder, pass holders obviously wouldn't pay either.
Okay, okay.
The current program cuts off the parking fee at six o'clock, correct, Matt?
That's correct.
Yes. Yeah. So that is correct. So if it was, yeah, so if it was later, if these are going to be, depending on what the exact start time is, I'd say minimal impact on the, on the payroll.
Yeah. And the visual is that people, you know, local people will come in, bring dinner, spread a blanket, enjoy the music. Hopefully by then, meet and chat with friends and get up and head home by car or by foot.
I just had a quick question. I know the library sometimes takes on some of the similar programming. Is it envisioned that this be sort of complimentary to that? Or maybe shifting some of the programming that takes place at the library now on the lawn to be more focused with the board? I don't know if any of that's been discussed or, or considered.
We did discuss that, and I believe the library is on Tuesday or Thursday nights. And so we went with Monday night for ours so that there would be no conflict with respect to the library.
Great. All right. Any other questions or comments?
I don't see any dates on here. So what Mondays were you considering and why starting with six and not something like three or four, if the library does have similar programming?
Six is our goal and we'd have to see how many bands that we can lock into place at this point. And I believe we were thinking it's starting the week after Fourth of July week.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none. Call the question. Doug, can you read the roll for the vote, please?
Counsel Boucher?
Yes.
Counsel Deveraux?
Yes.
Counsel Gabrielson?
Yes.
Counsel Caitlin Jordan?
Yes.
Counsel Penelope Jordan?
Yeah.
Counsel Noonan?
Yes.
And Chairman Garvin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I see a hand raised by Doreen Terrio. I don't know. Oh, and then it just went down. Okay, never mind. Didn't know if it was for that item or something else. Okay, next up is item number 26 dash 2021, Main Bureau of Highway Safety Impaired Driving Enforcement Grant. It's a recommendation of the Finance Director in conjunction with a grant that was pursued by Chief Fenton and the Public Safety Department support efforts to combat impaired driving, that the council accept the grant in the award amount of $1,954.88 with their gratitude and that any match of, any match requirements will be part of the Police Department's operating budget, which is allowed by the terms of the grant. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on this item? I see no hands raised. Is there any counselor that would like to make a motion on the acceptance of the grant?
So moved.
Moved by Counsel Gabrielson. Is there a second? Caitlin's out of hand?
Yeah.
Why not? There we go. Seconded by Counsel Caitlin Jordan. Any discussion? Seeing none, call a vote.
Counsel Boucher?
Yes.
Counsel Deveraux?
Yes.
Counsel Gabrielson?
Yes.
Counsel Caitlin Jordan?
Yes.
Counsel Penelope Jordan?
Yeah.
Counsel Noonan?
Yes.
Chairman Garvin?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Great, thank you. Next up is item number 27 dash 2021, our annual update on the Property Tax Assistance Program. Tax Assessor Clint in sweat has been patiently waiting with us. Thank you, Clint. We always do this to you, though, you know, at the very end today. So we squeezed you in only after an hour and 48 minutes.
Defense of the manager, Mr. Chairman, he is at home.
Yeah, I think, I think this is still some legacy tax assessor hazing going on from the former assessor Clint. So in any case, every year, the assessor, per the terms of the program that we developed a couple of years ago, comes forward to us with a report on access and usage to that program. So excited to hear what you have to say, Clint. Thanks for joining us.
Great, thank you. And thank you for having me, Chairman Garvin. And I'd like to welcome our new members to the council, Counselor Boucher and Counselor Noonan, welcome to the, welcome to the team. Yeah, so I'll give you a quick recap of our 2020 Senior Tax Relief Program. This is the third year of its development. And I got to tell you, it's, it's a great program. You know, being the, the town assessor is, is not a real glamorous position, but I can tell you, I, I really feel happy interacting with all of the, the senior people and they're, they're so appreciative of this program. And it's, it's grown for the third year in a row. So I'm very proud to be the, the steward of this, this program. So without further ado, let me just go over the numbers real quick. This year, we've approved 181 applications. I've only had to deny 14 for various causes. Let's see, we have the yeah. So the, the budget for this year, for this fiscal year was 85,000. I would, I would recommend upping that a, a little bit to maybe 95,000 for the next fiscal year because our, our numbers keep, keep increasing. And for those that are, that are new, let me briefly explain the program. It'll be the back of the napkin kind of description. You have to be a senior, 65 years of age or older, have to have lived in Cape Elizabeth, be a property owner for 10 years or longer, have the homestead exemption, have an annual income, household income of less than $60,000. And your taxes have to be greater than 5% of your gross adjusted taxable income. and your taxes have to be greater than five percent of your gross adjusted taxable income. And if you meet those requirements, you'll get a rebate check of five hundred dollars to go towards, um, whatever, whatever you need. And it's a, it's a great program and that's basically, uh, in a nutshell. And are there any questions, uh, about the program?
Go ahead, Jeremy.
Um, Clint, thanks for, um, this report and thanks for your, your work on this program. I think this is a, a great mechanism for, for providing some property tax relief to folks who really need it. Um, I, I see, it looks like we're, um, I, my recollection is that we went a little over budget last year and put some additional money into this program. It looks like we're probably a little bit over budget on this year's as well from your report. And I, I was just curious, um, on your thoughts about, uh, budgeting for next year. I know we'll take that up in January, but, um, do you, do you anticipate a similar level of growth in this program? Or how, um, you know, what are we looking at for projections in terms of, of eligible residents who may still, you know, pursue some tax relief through this?
Yeah, that's, that's a good question. I, I looked at the numbers from, uh, our first year, twenty nineteen, or, yeah, twenty nineteen to twenty twenty, there was a twenty-eight percent increase of applications from a hundred and thirty-two the first year to a hundred and sixty-nine the second year. In this third year, it was only a, an eight percent increase to a hundred and eighty-one applicants. So it kind of, I'd like to think that we're, we're, we're getting close to that sweet spot of, of everybody who's going to apply for it will apply for it. So that'll, that'll put our number right around ninety-five thousand. Even if we have a little bit of an increase next year. I think we're right on target.
Clint, I remember, um, former Counselor Straw, um, uh, raising questions, which I'll do, uh, in his absence now about, um, some of the outlier, um, applicants in terms of, um, property valuation and income and things like that. Are there, is, it had, over the three years of the program now, have you seen a little bit more, I guess for lack of a better word, uniformity around profile of applicant? Or is it still a little bit? I, I guess that what I'm trying to get to is making sure that we're getting the assistance to the people who need it, not the people who just are, are kind of able to take advantage of it based on some of the criteria.
Yeah, I think we are, I think we've got good parameters that are set. You know, some people, you know, the, the sixty thousand dollar, uh, income, you know, some people, you know, I, I had to deny them by this much, you know, uh, and other, uh, other cases, well, of the, of the fourteen that were denied, uh, six of the applicants were over the income. Three of them, their taxes were not greater than five percent of their income. Three of them had no homestead exemptions, which those people, I was able to mail them or email them in a, a homestead application, get that on the books for next season, so we are helping those people out. And one person actually moved out of town and still applied, so they were denied.
Yeah. So. We, we, we specifically did not put a property valuation parameter into the formula is, has your opinion changed on, on that at all about whether or not we should consider that?
Nope, I think we're, uh, I think we're, we're right where we need to be. The, uh, the, uh, yeah, the average valuation is two hundred and sixty-two thousand three hundred. You know, in Cape Elizabeth, that's, you know, that's probably middle to, middle to low value. So, yeah, I think we're, I think we're, we're, we're getting the people we need. And I, and I have to tell you the story, you know, one couple, and I'm not going to say their name, but the gentleman called me up, he was in his nineties and he, his, his wife is blind, uh, he can't hear and quite frankly, he had trouble reading. And I actually drove to his house, you know, wore a mask, you know, and was able to do the application with him at his house. He signed it and, and, and he told me, he said, you know, five hundred dollars is, is to a lot of people, that's not much money, he said, but for me and my wife, it's, it is a lot of money and it really, you know, kind of, made me feel good to help him out, so.
That's great, thank you for sharing that. Are there any other questions, uh, for Clint?
Yes.
Go ahead, Jeremy.
Great, thank you, uh, so I just had two quick questions. One is, it sounds like people can reapply year after year, am I getting the right impression there?
Yeah, what I, what I do is I maintain an Excel spreadsheet and if they've applied, even if they were denied, I, I keep them in my spreadsheet and next year I just automatically send them a new application. So it's, works out well, uh, usually, uh, before the program is launched, I touch base with the Cape Courier and the, and our webmaster and, and push that information out to people that might not know about the program, but, uh, yeah, it's, it's, it's a nice program.
Yeah, that's great. Um, and I also just wanted to know, is there, um, the intent or the ability at some point to raise that sixty thousand just to keep up with inflation or?
Um, it's something to talk about, I mean, I know it's, it's, it's an ordinance that we can certainly revisit. You know, I've had six, six people that I've had to deny because of the, um, the limitations. But if you do that, not only are you, you're going to get more applications, but you're probably going to get more denials as well, so. I, I don't know.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There any other questions? Yes, go ahead, Jeremy.
Um, I just, I, more a comment than a question, I just wanted to note, um, following up on Counselor Noonan's question, um, that I, I think that's something I'd like to maybe start keeping an eye on, um, as the program moves forward. Um, and just sort of, uh, i- if you start to see a pattern emerging or a trend where there's a lot of people who are sort of right at the, the income threshold, but otherwise seem to meet the spirit of what we're trying to do here. Um, I think that'd be helpful for the council to hear in future years.
Sure.
Okay, if there's no other comments or questions, uh, obtain a motion to acknowledge, receive the report, uh, with our thanks to the assessor um, for his work and management of the program. Is there a motion?
Motion, so moved.
Motion, motion by Counselor Boucher, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by, I saw Counselor Noonan, is there any discussion? Seeing none, can we have a roll call vote, Deb?
Counselor Boucher?
Yes.
Counselor Deveraux?
Yes.
Counselor Gabrielson?
Yes.
Counselor Caitlin Jordan?
Yes.
Counselor Penelope Jordan?
Yes.
Counselor Noonan?
Yes.
And Chairman Garvin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next up is item number, thanks again Clint, um, next up is item number two-eight dash two zero two one, Willowbrook Culvert Replacement Grant. I think that I saw Maureen O'Meara in the list of folks, I do, so Matt, if you want to promote her up to participant. And, uh, Maureen, would, would you like to give us a brief introduction on this? And then I'll see if there's any public, uh, comment.
Good evening.
How are you? Thank you for your patience.
No problem. Do you have any questions or do you need a summary?
Would you mind just giving us a brief introduction?
Oh, I'd be happy to, so, uh, this is a project, a couple of years ago, the council had a presentation on an assessment of the sixteen, you know, worst culverts in Cape Elizabeth and, um, a team effort, uh, went after, uh, grant funding for the worst culvert, which was the winner, the cul- the Willowbrook Culvert. Just to summarize, there are two culverts in Willowbrook, they're corrugated metal, they're badly deteriorating, but their, uh, most impressive feature is they are immediately underneath two very large sewer lines, about thirty-five inches of sewer lines, carrying about half a million gallons of treated and untreated wastewater back and forth across Willowbrook and we want them to keep doing that and not rupture. And so as these culverts deteriorate and are providing probably structural support to the sewer lines, it was very important that we get them replaced. So, uh, we went after this grant and, uh, for a seventy-five thousand dollar match, which by the way, would not be sufficient money to replace the culverts in kind, we are instead getting a grant which will allow us to replace the culverts, which, with a much superior piece of infrastructure, much more environmentally sound and, uh, much more resilient to climate change. So it's a three hundred and forty-three thousand dollar grant. Uh, we are required to do a title study before the, uh, I's are dotted and the T's are crossed in the grant. We were including that in the work anyway and we're very confident that, uh, we'll get the final money. And I just want to recognize that this really was a team effort, uh, Steve Harding and Shane Kelly from Sebago Technics. Uh, Jake Eamon from the Wells National Estuarine Research Reserve was, uh, instrumental in helping us over all of the environmental requirements. And there are some other people out there whose names I won't mention, but you know you helped out, I appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Maureen, for the overview and also, uh, to all those folks you just mentioned. And, uh, always appreciate your continued dogged pursuit of these opportunities. Um, this is a, uh, this is a big one. I did want to turn it over to Matt real quick, just to add a little bit more clarity on the couple of notes here on the agenda item relative to us already having authorized the cash match, but it, Matt, you've got a note here about making sure we formally included in the budget, can you just, uh, clarify that for folks?
Yes, this is, uh, this will, i- in many ways firmly cemented into our capital project, capital, uh, project items for next year's budget, the fiscal twenty-two, uh, budget. We do have a, a couple of mechanisms that we will explore as far as paying, uh, for this. Uh, maybe out of the sewer fund, uh, but we will definitely, uh, we do want to allocate funds for that because as Maureen said, and, uh, she downplayed, uh, the significance of this. Uh, her work was exemplary when it came to acquiring this, uh, to get this into place and with the threat of what we have, uh, if, if that was to rupture, uh, and, and stressing the importance of it. Uh, this is something that we, we really can't, A, can't wait much longer to do, uh, and B, uh, it's something that, uh, of all the priority items that we will have on our capital, this would be probably top three uh, for the upcoming budget. So, uh, by doing this, we are going to be doing our, our, the title study that Maureen had said as well, uh, that will, they'll firm it up, uh, but we'll also be locking in that amount of, of funds. So by, by flexing that seventy-five grand and, and, I mean, any, it all comes down to the council's final approval, obviously, but this would be one that we, we could have the funds, uh, available out of where we are right now and earmark them for next year's, next year's budget.
Great, thank you for that. Uh, before we do move on, I want to just ask, we've, um, got just a couple of folks left, um, joining us from the public. Uh, if anyone wants to speak on this item, you're welcome to do so now. Seeing none, um, is there a motion from anyone, uh, to accept the grant? Uh, conditional upon the completion of the study that was just mentioned.
They're moved.
Moved by Counselor Gabrielson, is there a second? Counselor Deveraux, any further discussion? Go ahead, Counselor Deveraux.
I just have a couple of questions, uh, the title study typically, how long does that take, Maureen? Is it, um, take a couple of months or is it something that would take six, eight months?
Actually, we're, we're really very fortunate, uh, when we had done that, uh, covert assessment I talked about a couple of years ago, one of the outcomes of that was that the town of Cape Elizabeth got some grant funding to study the Sawyer Brook Culvert and we hired Acadia Engineering to do all of that modeling, was a pretty intensive project and, and I know that's one of the things that's kind of pending on a council agenda sometime when you have some free time on one of your workshops. I think you might find it a very interesting study. So what we're able to do is we're able to go back to the same gentleman with the same modeling work he's already done and he can use that as the basis for the title study for Willowbrook. And, uh, he's, he's already given us a contract, we're ready to sign it and he thinks he can get it done in just a few months.
That's, that sounds wonderful, so, um, really the timeframe would be twenty twenty-two? There's no way we could get the money and start this, um, in twenty twenty-one?
We have, we have some permitting we have to acquire, uh, the other thing is, and, and this is when the engineers do a better job than I do, there is a very fixed timeframe when you're allowed to do construction work in a title area. So, um, we, we really aren't going to make the first timeframe, we have to wait for the second one.
Okay, great, well, thank you for all your work on this.
Any other comments or discussion? Jeremy?
I just wanted to add on the, the kudos, um, and appreciate all the work that Maureen's put into, uh, making this happen. These are not, as, having gone after MNRCP programs on other projects where this is a heavy lift and I just want to really appreciate all the work that Maureen's put into this. Um, also wanted to know, um, just that, uh, I hope to appreciate the fact that Cape Elizabeth is staying ahead of the curve on this. Um, there are roughly a thousand title restrictions in Maine that are associated with small roads and dams and, you know, other culverts like, like this one. Um, and we've just done a great job as a town, staying ahead of that, understanding where those liabilities are and taking proactive steps to address them. So again, um, thanks to Ma- uh, Maureen's good work in, in helping keep us ahead of the, the curve on them.
Thanks, Jeremy. Any other discussion? Seeing none? Maureen, uh, I'm sorry, Deb?
Counselor Boucher?
Yes.
Counselor Deveraux?
Yes.
Counselor Gabrielson?
Yes.
Counselor Caitlin Jordan?
Yes.
Counselor Penelope Jordan?
Yes.
Counselor Noonan?
Yes.
And Chairman Garvin?
Yep, thank you.
Motion carries.
Great, um, next up is item number twenty-nine dash two zero two one, uh, standard easement deed, um, being granted to CMP and Verizon. This is in follow-up to the item that we approved last month, um, uh, for the sighting of the new communications tower up at the transfer station property. Uh, is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, uh, it's recommended that we grant a standard utility easement, CMP and Verizon, um, for the tower site located on Dennison Drive and authorize the town manager to sign on behalf of the town. Is there a motion?
So moved.
I didn't hear who that was. Who, who made the motion? Caitlin, thank you, sorry, I didn't, I couldn't.
Okay.
Moved by Counselor Caitlin Jordan, seconded by Counselor Penny Jordan, any discussion? Counselor Noonan?
I just have a quick question, these are both just for the operation of the tower, correct? These lines?
Go ahead, Matt.
Great, great question, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, great question, Counselor Moonan, uh, this would be, uh, it's a standard utility easement. The power's on the other side of the, uh, of the driveway at the recycling center and, uh, to get them to go across and onto that other section, they need to have easement to run the wires there, uh, to come through it. And it's, the good thing is the single phase line, which is, uh, a much more cost effective for us and they'll be putting that in there, but also, uh, the telephone line, so they will have, uh, landline connection as well. So it's, uh, it's like if you were building a new house, you would have those, uh, easements that you'd have to place on, on, on your own. You're welcome.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, Deb?
Counselor Boucher?
Yes.
Counselor Deveraux?
Yes.
Counselor Gabrielson?
Yes.
Counselor Caitlin Jordan?
Yes.
Counselor Penelope Jordan?
Yes.
Counselor Noonan?
Yes.
And Chairman Garvin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, um, next up is item number thirty dash two zero two one, acceptance of annual gifts and donations. Uh, we have attached to the agenda a list of, um, uh, various donations that have been made to the town in the past year. Uh, is there anybody from the public? various donations that have been made to the town in the past year. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak about this item? Seeing none, I will, on behalf of the council, just extend thanks and gratitude to all these folks for their donations and contributions. We're very grateful. And with that, is there a motion to accept the gifts and donations? Moved by Counsel Deveraux, second by Counsel Caitlin Jordan. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Go ahead, Deb.
Counselor Boucher?
Yes.
Counselor Deveraux?
Yes.
Counselor Gabrielson?
Yes.
Counselor Caitlin Jordan?
Yes.
Counselor Penelope Jordan?
Yes.
Counselor Noonan?
Yes.
And Chairman Garvin?
Yes. And we have four folks left. Are there any final comments from the public for items not on the agenda tonight? I see no hands raised, so with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
We adjourn.
Moved by Counsel Penny Jordan. I saw Jeremy for the second. Any discussion? Seeing none. Go ahead, Deb.
Counselor Boucher?
Yes.
Counselor Deveraux?
Yes.
Counselor Gabrielson?
Yes.
Counselor Counselor Caitlin Jordan?
Yes.
Counselor Penelope Jordan?
Yes.
Counselor Noonan?
Yes.
And Chairman Garvin?
Yes. Thanks very much, everybody. We'll see you Wednesday for our workshop on FOIA and Code of Ethics and stuff. Thanks, everybody.
Take care.
Good night.
Have a good night.